Okay, I'd like to call to order the Monday of July 14th Board of Education Annual Organization Meeting. To order at 6:11 PM. But everybody please stand to the left. The Institute of Life, United States of America, to agree on whether you stand on station or not. In this vote, the President of Justice. Here.
David Carter.
Here.
Michael Hensel is here, Mr. Andrew Holter.
Here.
Welcome. And Nancy, you're going to vote.
Here.
And there, we go back proportionally to the first one.
Okay. The exits are to our right and to our left. And now I will hand it over. District.
Yes, yes. So I would like to take nominations from the four President of the Board of Education. No one, no one, no one. But all were looking, all in order to do the matter open. You can just go to call together and just speak around these events, I don't want them. Mike has the place, that's his turn.
Oh.
Stand? No. Just read. Go ahead. And David, if you know, you just trust me to do it, David.
Absolutely, okay. I do solemnly affirm that I have the Constitution of the United States of America, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education, and the degree of authority of your district according to the best of my ability.
Okay, now. Subject two, I will take nominations from the four President of the Board of Education. Let a nomination. Then from my comp. Where is second? In second. Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are placed to be added in the motion for vote for the President. All favor.
Aye. 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 Person with the nomination.
It says whatever's second, it said whatever. So our votes are voting as nominated. Now that is actually nominated. Okay, like a vote for the first. So the first for John, for the President. Okay. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm back.
You're back.
Good to be excited, guys. Can't wait.
I would like to motion to adjourn access to the floor. It's a special session.
Is that not possible?
But it could be a special session. No, it's not a nomination. So yes. John, John's president. David could be president.
What?
David Sager. David.
How about? I do solemnly affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of New York. I faithfully discharge the duties of the President of the Board of Education of the degree of authority of your district according to the best of my ability. Okay. So now it's back to me. All right. Subject two dot three, election of the Vice President. Please get somebody to nominate someone for the Vice President.
I'll nominate him.
Okay, so Dave's first, sorry, Mike's second. Okay, so that's two. For nomination. Any other nominees? No? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I elect. I elect. I'll elect Patty.
I second, I second that.
Any discussion? No? All right. All favor? Aye. Vote for Patty. Six is here.
Okay.
Six is, oh, six is. Move it, move it, right along. All right, so Patty, I'm gonna answer this. This out loud. Sign it, please.
I do solemnly affirm and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Vice President of the Board of Education of the degree of authority of your district according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Okay. Now. Both to Superintendent Patty, please, they can't lie.
I do solemnly affirm and declare that I support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent Patty's schools according to the best of my ability.
No, no. I agree.
All right.
I do solemnly affirm and declare that I support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Education of the degree of authority of your district according to the best of my ability.
No, we're ready. Okay. So, uh, I'm going to make appointments for the audit committee. So I believe you rose on the audit committee last year. Decided to shell. Mike, you were on the audit committee? He's on the audit.
Shell.
You see him, shell? Right now. I can't remember what you're talking about. Aaron is not on. Not on. So it's still.
It's pretty easy.
All right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm trying to say.
Okay. Start off.
It's not very intense.
Okay. Uh, subject four dot two, I'd like to appoint members of the Facilities Committee. So I'll stay on the Facilities Committee. Mike, you stay on?
I'll stay on, so.
Okay. And I know Aaron said he would stay on. So. All right, Budget Committee. Subject four dot three, I'd like to appoint members of the Budget Committee. So I'll stay on the Budget Committee. Who else would like to have? Possibly any. Okay, subject four dot four, I'm going to appoint members to the Policy Committee. Dave, Patty, Ochsner. Okay. Any other takers to the Policy Committee? Shout out. All voters. Subject four dot five, appointing a board member liaison to Chester and Warwick Schools. Our Legislative Board was have asked here. Um, even Chester. Patty, that's you. Patty, you were a board member. And what's? Subject four dot six, appoint a board member to Oxmo. Mike, do you want to stick? Of that. Subject four dot seven, appoint a board member as NISBA able to vote delegate and alternative. So I know that was Michelle. Uh, there's no meetings at, like, those are online, right? And then voted online as well. So Patty will take it. Mike, you were the delegate, right?
No. No.
Oh, sorry. So Patty will be the delegate. Do you want to stay as the alternate?
Yes.
Patty's going to be the delegate, Mike will be the alternate. Appointing a board member as NISBA Legislative Liaison. That's pretty much the same thing.
Exactly.
Yeah, because this, I think the first was just the voting. And then this is where you draw the majority. And that's the first one, there's a month here. It happens like. There was emails and then if there's anything important, just provide some information. Okay. Hi, is that good with you?
Yeah.
That's fine. Now, this is to appoint all remaining people, and this is everything that is, uh, that we always point every year. I believe there was one change. Oh, it was the, uh, the newspaper. We're gonna make the Times Herald, uh, the main newspaper. We're still gonna send it to the world advertiser. But a lot of times they go in. From that, they start the United States. And then, uh, yeah, the police organization, which and that's really a stop. Okay, so very interesting. And this is for everything under, uh, recommendation for, 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 under section, subject six. And it includes. Sixty-five, so. So, uh, okay, subject five, did you have a question, Mike?
No.
Okay. So, uh. Subject five dot O for recommendation for appointment and approval by Superintendent Schools, which is six point zero, two point something, six five. Uh, yeah, please get a motion to approve all of these. Dave? Sorry. Patty? All favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Now, please. Okay, now we're. Okay, so now we're gonna start the Board of Education Business Meeting at six twenty-four. Subject two dot one, Board of Education, I can review the group's agenda as presented in our amendment. And who's the motion? Dave? Patty? Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Subject three dot one, yeah, please get a motion to accept the minutes of the June sixteen Business Meeting. As presented. Kevin? Ian? Any discussion? All favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero. Uh, subject five dot one, statements and presentations, I will hand over to Superintendent Patty.
Anything, and if there are any to speak. Anything? But it's. Um, so the two thousand twenty-three Capitol Project is in full swing this summer. It includes work on the roofs at both buildings, the student bathrooms at both buildings, the locker rooms at the middle school, floor tiling at the middle school, one school tech office, and then the awards display, water tank at the middle school, very, 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 water tank. Uh, Calm Street exit, water mitigation, and much more. Just to show you some pictures of progress. So these, the roofs start out looking kind of like this. The holes, some kind of stone. Uh, let's see that we have materials delivered. Uh, and then you'll see that the new roofs are white texture. And so it's a rubberized system basically. And see all that running on. This is at the middle school, this is at the elementary school. Uh, they are still, even elementary school, it's done at this point, middle school, they're still working on some roofs. This is the cafeteria so far. This is how it's started, how it first started. Uh, they got all the tile ripped up, and then it was very rough floor. They now have it completely smoothed out. So that is progressing nicely. We are also working on the new electrical boxes on the floor to make our technical happy. Once the works work. Uh, also in the classrooms, we had a lot of classrooms, so the tiles were ripped up. It looks similar to what the cafeteria floor looked like. Uh, and then from there, they smoothed it out. You'll see that there, there was a gap, and remember they're taking a tour of the school. There was a gap in the floors between the floor and the wall. And remember an inch to about two inches, we have an inch to about two inches of space. The, uh, it looks like flashing, it's not, but the metal pieces that they put in a wall that now installed. After that, they do a smoothing of that floor. Then they put this red, I call it the red face. I'm not exactly sure what it is, but it's the red face. After the red face, there's a leveling coating face, and that's when it turns, uh, gray. Which I'll show you in another picture. After the gray leveling face, the floor is now completely leveled, and it's a self leveler. Then they stick the glue down, and then they put the tiles in. And so the tiles are in, in several classrooms already, and in office spaces. And our guys have already started moving in and waxing some of the floors. So, um, so far, so good in terms of progress in the classrooms and everything's on. In the locker rooms, you'll see, uh, this is kind of what it looked like originally in there. We're moving the showers, uh, pulling out the toilets, making new bathrooms, et cetera. Uh, installing the new unit set shower, and we all, it's amazing. Uh, they've been in there digging, and this is the current status, lots of dirt, exposed pipes. So we need to do some sealing equipment, uh, that is also on schedule. Just a little picture of the main hall, we're walking towards the cafeteria. This is what it looks like this morning. This is the upstream entrance, but they're doing the water mitigation. You'll see that there are, the bottom step is another step. Yes, it's, that's right. Which here is. But they have now installed the concrete on new level. And going to flush what the bottom step was. Then outside the door, there is concrete that's gonna be going out and sloping away. So they hope that all of our is not coming into that entrance anyway. So the door on this is set to be shipped on August first. So we are hoping that it is on site installed quite soon at school. If not, they'll raise the hold door temporarily, so we can have exit for the students. And the level is still, like, installed once they have received their funding. Any questions about the Capitol Project? The one kind of main issue that we have seen that's kind of took things out of the way is when they opened up the girls' bathroom here. There was a A-wall, kind of built into the wall when they dug it. They found an iron beam that came out, and that's kind of going back and forth with the structural engineers to see if it's structural or not. Uh, it's been about two weeks going back and forth. We think that we're going to have to box it out and try to do a thing up to the ceiling. Because we don't think we're gonna get, we thought maybe we'd be able to shave it off. We don't think we're gonna be able to, we have to box it out. Definitely will be a client, when she starts going in, hopefully has a good time a little bit. Other than that, honor our prayers. Okay. Uh, subject two dot one, if you'd like to give your small update on your favorite this summer. And my question?
Um, so last summer. Last summer, uh, we had many summer committees that took place. One of those committees had to do with, um, moving from a responsive intervention model to a multi-tiered systemic support model. Uh, it was two days of heavy work that was done. And then we started the sweeping here off with, uh, new systems in place, both at the middle and elementary schools. Sarah, do you have any?
What was it?
We had to send. Cars and I.
And just for my review.
Oh, okay. We didn't order the camera. Okay, but then I don't have to. Okay, well, summer is a plus. Okay, you have a misunderstanding. Um, so this summer, we have many summer committees, as well as professional development plans. Uh, one of which is what I was just talking about, which we'll talk about at a later date, which is updating our multi-tiered systemic support, so that we can align what's going on in the elementary school and middle school. Uh, upcoming this week, we have our PBIS and disciplinary committee taking place, um, where we are going to really take a hard look, and that would be, actually not myself, but particularly for schools, as well as the support school, along with constituents from both middle school and elementary school, to really take a look at our current PBIS program, how to restructure that program, and then how that fits into disciplining across the board in local buildings. Um, upcoming, we also will be working on our mentoring and professional development plans. We will also be attending a conference, uh, at Mount St. Mary's College. David Caddy, who is in Blue Room in the field of education, will be, uh, one of the leading keynote speakers, uh, talking about changes and shifts in education. Trying to, and also. Uh, and we also will be having, um, uh, NJHS. We are going to be having, at our report cards again. Uh, lots of good things happening, most importantly, tonight with your support. We're really excited to adopt our, um, reading curriculum. Uh, that would be CPHMH inter reading for Rigs Day five, hence the last day. Uh, education systems pre-k on our way for our PPA. Also very excited to have two new PPA classrooms this fall. So we're getting things ordered for the second classroom, uh, and having a lot of training with Slastic for our teachers to implement the programs, and also having upcoming training for our existing, uh, K by staff on the, uh, HMH. So lots of good things happening, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so the Policy Committee met this week, I was gonna do it on, I just didn't really sustain it. Uh, we have three different policies. Two are up for first reading, waiting to set in an adoption. They need one, and we do have a new agenda, new policy that's running down from the state. There's two, what's called a belt, a belt van on some ones. So the Policy Committee sat and reviewed the recommended policy for NISBA. Uh, added, tweaked it to be specific to bring the late, just some elements of it. It said it would be a belt, a belt van for students, they do not have any, any personal devices connected to the internet, so no phones, no watches, uh, any other smartphones whatsoever. Student parents will be able to communicate through many offices, we're gonna print like nineteen eighty-five. We're gonna call businesses and send, and send those up to the classrooms. Uh, there are progressive consequences if students do violate this policy. Uh, the first offense, it can be returned at the end of the day to the student. The second offense, the parent have to pick it up. The third offense would be, um, put in detention, school suspension, et cetera. One key factor in this is that you cannot turn out a school suspension based solely on having your phone out. Now, if they have their phone out and they do something else with the phone, and there's a combination of different consequences, what's that called, potentially consequence, but it can't just be for having it out. Uh, example, that would be using it to take a court of student without their permission, uh, or take photos of somebody, or access on their personal phone. Uh, one thing that the Policy Committee did discuss is that this policy is for students and the focus on instruction may lose some staff. So when staff are around students, or students in the room, there are some small exceptions, um, but that staff have their cell phones available. There are also some student exceptions to this rule, if students have a medical need, uh, if they are caretaker for a parent, or if they need assistance for translation. However, with each of those, there may be other ways to do it, not to a personal device. So for example, with translation, and every student has a phone, so we can use the phone call to witness, so they need to have, so it's only up to alternate way, for medical problems that pass, they can, uh, we can arrange that. Uh, medically, you have to go through a process review, it'll have to be from the doctor's note to the specific clinical reason, and it'll go, um, through the CMC department, by the board, etc., of, um, you can. But from here, the, like I said, the administrative team has reviewed it, the Policy Committee has reviewed it, I have reviewed it. It's up for first reading tonight. After tonight, they will go out to the community, and to staff, and have to review it, and give us feedback, and the Policy Committee will be again, there's gonna be now an office meeting, and an opportunity to, uh, for adoption, based on, and, and then review based on the feedback. Uh, Mike and David, do you want to add anything to the policy?
Well, I'm not for this. I want to.
I will say that I'm not looking to do anything for the students beyond what is mandated. So it's probably just basically out of sight, but away, um, about time.
Because.
So we're not ordering the bags for students, that some districts are running, running, um, not being able to turn in anywhere. Um, if we don't see it, we're good. Um, and kind of, you know, as long as we don't see it, we're good. If you give us a reason to look for it, and you pad it out, then that's, that's what we will do. For our purposes. All right. Uh, is there any question?
Okay, thank you. Uh, moving along. Uh, this is our liaison from Chester. Any, any updates, uh, graduation? Doctor here, now, sorry. Their first aid, their, their. Thank you. And for what?
Um, just keep, uh, the transparent, they'll be coming, fresh, the, um, the reception company that are coming, we have those for date yet. Also, um, anyone trying out for fall sports, make sure that they, um, students have their physical, and they go that online paperwork. Um, and needs for their online tryouts, the tryouts are upcoming, we're expecting, we'll have by next week. We made August, this is, it's, uh, the beginning of fifteen, twenty, and those tryouts for fall sports. Uh, graduation was great, we were successful. Um, congratulations to all Lakers that graduated. Um, also, um, something, there are twenty, there were twenty-six seniors that signed their, um, letter of intent for work at College Sports, and four of them are Lakers, uh, who are very, so. It's a great, great following, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. I'm honored. Anything from Oxmo, Mike?
No, there are Oxmo houses, and there are those people who do that.
You're gonna have to remind me of that. Okay, facilities, I think Sarah covered it with her presentation about the Capitol Project. Uh, unless you're here, just all the board are. That's cool, thank you. Luckily, they have a shop max for, for something to work out. Nothing about the, uh, nothing about budget, Policy Committee, that, and Sarah just presented the cell phone policy quickly. Uh, just about, uh, that, so it's sent out to the, the teachers. That will be, uh, again. PTS liaison. Those are the legal liaison, please stay out of it for us.
Well, hi, I don't have any updates today. Just wanna say thank you again, we have the building, and enjoy the summer. And we look forward to joining you again in September, or August, if that's planning for the next year.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Subject six dot one, approval of the floor. Okay. All right, I gotta read this real quick.
That's okay.
I'll be quick, all right.
You know my heart.
I relax. Public expression of the PA shall be encouraged, and the following amendments are intended to promote a orderly procedure for public comment and participation. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest and concern during the approval of the floor section, and each month with a regular board meeting. And I, we should add, uh, we'll take your question of, of. And I, we should add, uh, take your questions, of course. We don't answer them, so, you know, just want you to be aware of that. Uh, anyone wishing to be heard and sign in on the public comment form prior to starting the business meeting or before speaking. Speakers will be asked to state their name before addressing a question or statement to the board. Speakers may be limited to, oh, three minutes, three minutes each in their comments or questions. Speakers are to have the right to speak without interruption or to address the president of the board. Luckily, that's me again this year. Uh, comments regarding specific personnel will be ruled out of the board and referred to the superintendent. Speakers will not be recognized for a second time until all who wish to speak have been given an opportunity. The board may suspend for a little bit if the board has determined that a continued discussion on a particular topic will prevent the board from completing its scheduled business. Or if one of the guidelines is not adhered to, continued participation is to be disrupted. All right.
Hi, I'm Cory Sam, uh, co-president of the G L T A. Uh, I just have a really good question. Thank you. Uh, I just have a quick question about the cell phone policy. Is part of the mandate from the state including the staff? Is that from the state that the staff has to be included in that policy? That's my question.
Okay, we'll, we'll.
Oh, yes. No. Okay. My gosh, thank you.
Any other speakers? No, thank you. Appreciate it. Subject seven dot one. May I please get a motion to adopt amendment of school district records, regulation number eleven twenty dash R as presented. Case. Ian, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Subject seven dot two. May I please get a motion to adopt a first reading of policy number eighty-eight-one-three, extreme heat conditions as presented. Ian, Mike, Andrew, Sarah, where he goes. I think this was established by the state, but it should reflect us because we do have air conditioning in local buildings. So unless something happens, I don't believe it should be bought. I just wanted to make sure that it has that, like, happening. Yeah, right. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Subject seven dot three. May I please get a motion to approve the first reading of policy number fifty-six ninety-five, students and personnel electronic devices as presented. Dave, Mike, any discussion?
All favor? Aye. Motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot one. May I please get a motion to approve the financial reports for June twenty twenty-five as presented? Kevin? Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot two. May I please get a motion to adopt Spalastic Education Curriculum as presented?
Aye. Ian, any discussion? All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot three. May I please get a motion to adopt H M H grades eighty-five, reading for print schedule curriculum for grades eighty-five? Maddie, Kevin? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot four. May I please get a motion to approve the S M O A between the district and the school's custodial committee as presented? Dave? Patty? Sorry, Mike, you're a little delayed. Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot five. May I please get a motion to approve the health services contractor, the top C W, who is school district as presented? Kevin, Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot six. May I please get a motion to approve substitute rates as presented in the public final attachment? Maddie, Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot seven. May I please get a motion to establish the rate for special education home academic instruction as presented? Dave, Patty? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot eight. May I please get a motion to approve the superintendent to assign current employees to full temporary vacancy in another unit completed and approved grade okay as presented? Ian?
Kevin?
Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject eight dot nine. May I please get a motion to approve the annual financial audit and tenure agreement as presented?
Dave?
Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot one. May I please get a motion to accept full regret, resignation, or intent to retire of being across as presented? Maddie, Kevin? Thank you very much for your years of service. So, thank you, Patty, for another day. All favor?
Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot two. May I please get a motion to accept full regret, uh, regret, the resignation of Cory as Mason as presented? Mike, Patty? Uh, thank you, Cory, for all your service. If you're watching, I appreciate it.
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Uh, subject nine dot three. May I please get a motion to accept the resignation of Marietta Kennedy as presented? Ian?
Kevin?
Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot four. May I please get a motion to appoint Samantha Tuschler as provisional school food service director? One, as presented? Mike? Patty? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot five. May I please get a motion to appoint Laura Roch as a substitute nurse as presented? Patty, Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot six. May I please get a motion to abolish one F T P L M A teaching position, one F T P seventh eighth grade D L A teaching position, and one F T P seventh eighth grade math teaching position as presented? Kevin and Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot seven. May I please get a motion to abolish the cook manager position? Dave, Ian? And Kevin, just so you're aware, so that was done by Samantha. We had a previous person that's been a little bit of a case. Uh, classes on, sometimes she got voted. All right, all favor?
Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot eight. May I please get a motion to appoint the following summer favors as presented? Just so, so that you're aware, those are the people that are hired to, to mature at the schools during the capital project. Kevin, Mike, all favor?
Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot nine. May I please get a motion to appoint Lauren Grapp as part-time speech therapist as presented? Dave, Patty? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot ten. May I please get a motion to appoint Teresa Finn as registrar as presented? Dave, Ian? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot eleven. May I please get a motion to appoint Mary Patricia as district clerk as presented? Dave, Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, aye, motion passes six to zero. I understand.
And you. Subject nine dot thirteen twelve. May I please get a motion to appoint Mike Lasky as athletic director as presented? Ian? Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot thirteen. May I please get a motion to appoint Daniel Martin as clean smarter as presented? Kevin? Ian? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot fourteen. May I please get a motion to appoint Christopher Ferri as website administrator as presented? Patty? Dave? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot fifteen. May I please get a motion to appoint Michael Presti as David Protection Officer as presented? Kevin? Ian? Thank you, Mike? All favor?
Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot sixteen. May I please get a motion to appoint Victor Pickin-Terror as technology aid as presented? Patty, Ian? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot seventeen. May I please get a motion to appoint Helen I. T. Prishman as substitute caller as presented? Patty? Dave? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot eighteen. May I please get a motion to appoint Jose Maras as substitute school manager here as presented?
Kevin? Patty?
Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot nineteen. May I please get a motion to appoint the following staff members for summer work as presented? Dave? Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot twenty. May I please get a motion to appoint the following teachers for summer professional development as presented? Ian? Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot twenty-one. May I please get a motion to appoint the following teachers to teach in assistance for the summer enrichment programs and committees as presented? Patty? Kevin? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot twenty-two. May I please get a motion to appoint Michael Presti, Christopher Ferri, and Victor Pickin-Terror as video editors for the school here as presented? Kevin? Patty? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject nine dot twenty-three. May I please get a motion to approve a compensation for additional workload, purchasing, receiving, and account management, processing, and oversight as presented? Dave? Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject ten dot one. May I please get a motion to accept the entire consent agenda according to recommended action? Asterisk items listed below are consent items. Consent agenda items are approved via a simple vote unless they are removed when being consented by the board to revoke. Kevin? Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject eleven dot one. May I please get a motion to execute terms and conditions for attorney services? Attorney services, Michelle, or some other? Uh, these are all, sorry. Eleven dot one, eleven dot two, eleven dot three, eleven dot four. We're all way up to. Eleven dot seven, all approved, now we're on twelve dot one. Subject twelve dot one. May I please get a motion to accept C P S E and C S E recognition as presented? Dave? Mike? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
Subject thirteen dot one. May I please get a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss negotiations conducted pursuant to the general law of the G L T A. Dave? Patty? Any discussion?
All favor? Aye, motion passes six to zero.
We will not give you time to, uh, business meeting after executive session. The next, uh, board of education business meeting will be held Monday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Probably here back in the elders. Any changes will let everybody know. Thank you.